That shift their vote, right? And so here are positive arguments that you can take during the survey. And the nature of the question is, you know, I'd like to tell you what supporters say about this measure we've been discussing. Supporters say blank, insert positive argument. Do you think this is a very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not at all convincing reason to support the measure? And what you can see here is that the positive arguments that we tested really resonated with the community. You had 79% of folks, for examples, say that they thought it was a convincing argument that all of the money raised by the measure will be spent locally and to continue providing quality services in the community. It can't be taken away by the state or used for other purposes. So the idea that this is local money that stays here in Adderall, you had 79% who said that's at least a somewhat convincing reason to support the measure. The other item, the second one down, is just the idea that, you know, this measure allows the town to keep up with basic repairs and maintenance of street infrastructure. If you don't take care of it now, it's just going to be more expensive in the future. Those sorts of items. So all of the positive arguments resonated, and they resonated quite strongly. Now, by this point in the survey, the voters have heard a lot more about this measure, right? They saw the initial ballot test, but then after that, we presented to them the information about all the different projects and services that could be funded by the measure. We also presented them positive arguments. And so we circle back and we say, okay, now that you've heard it more, where do you stand on your vote with respect to parcel tax renewal? And here are the results. Very stable, ticked up a little bit, right? So now you have 77% of folks saying that they will support the parcel tax renewal. You have 19% still holding steady in the no group, and you've got about 4% who aren't sure or unwilling to answer the question. And by this time in the survey, what we found is, again, a lot of stability at that subgroup level. Not only are we seeing aggregate stability, meaning from 75 on the initial ballot test to 77. When you look at the subgroup level, you don't have a lot of movement going on. So people are tending to read this, lock in their position, and sort of stay there, much more so than we see in other types of measures. A lot of times, you'll see movement happening, even if it's stable in the aggregate. You look behind there, you've got yeses going to nos, and nos going to yeses, and people moving around. We're not getting a lot of movement in this poll. We also tested negative arguments, and the idea is, let's put on our opposition hat and get creative and think about, you know, anticipate what an opponent of this measure might say. And one of the things that you can see right away is, if you compare the negatives, and I'll toggle back and forth for a second, same basic concept. We say opponents say blank. In this case, do you think it's a very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not at all convincing reason to oppose the measure? If you look at these arguments, what you're seeing is the strongest was just under 50%. And yet, when you toggle back to the positives, all of them were over two-thirds, right? So the negatives aren't resonating as strongly as the positives. And so what we then do, now that they've heard the negatives, we circle back one more time. And we say, okay, now that you've heard a bit more, where do you stand? And what we're looking for is how much erosion and support do you have once they get exposed to these negative arguments about the measure and the results? You're at 75% again. So when you think about this measure, what we've had is tremendous amount of stability over the course of the interview in the aggregate. Started at 75, went to 77, after the negatives, you're back at 75. And at the subgroup level, when we looked at it, actually, at the individual level, only 10% of voters in our survey flipped positions, meaning, and a flip position can be an I'm-not-sure, or a positive or negative, or, you know, a negative or positive, or a positive or negative. Only 10% did that. Most of the time, when we do these studies, you're looking more at 18%, 19%. So you have very little movement among your residents on this issue after that initial ballot test. All right, so what does all this mean? I go into more detail on the report itself, but let me try and summarize now here. Circle back to that first question that I mentioned, the overarching question we're trying to ask, answer with this type of research, which is, is a measure feasible? If the council chooses to place this measure in an upcoming ballot, does it have a reasonable chance of being successful? The answer to that, in this case, clearly yes. There's a number of pieces that we like to see in place for a measure to be feasible are in place here. Number one, voters really value the quality of life in this community. They think the town's doing a good job in providing municipal services. And that, those sentiments combine to create very strong support for the idea of renewing this parcel tax to fund those important services as long as you're not increasing the tax rate. We found that right out of the gates, you had 75% support, which is very unusual, as I mentioned. It's on the high side of what one could hope to have at an initial ballot test. We tested a series of services and projects that could be funded by this parcel tax, and they were, for the most part, all popular. You had those positive arguments that we tested on behalf of this measure really resonated with two-thirds plus of your community. And as I mentioned, very steady support throughout the interview. So we never saw sort of wild fluctuations depending on the context. It seemed like people were able to make up their mind pretty early about this measure, and they stayed there. Now, having said that, you know, this measure is certainly feasible, there's a couple other sort of considerations that I always like to convey as part of this. Number one is the idea that a poll like this is a snapshot in time, it's not a personal ball, right? It's looking ahead to elections day and saying, you're going to get 75% on election day. It's where your community's at today. And the reason I mention that in particular, when you have results that are as positive as this, is I've tended to see two things happen when you get really strong poll results like this. Number one, and I don't see that being the case here, is the council were more getting aggressive, right? They look at 75%, and they say, let's raise the tax rate, let's throw some things on the expenditure plan that we didn't even test, what I'd like to think, because they're acting like, you know what, we've got so strong support, now we can really kind of move this in a way that maybe we never tested before, maybe we've got room to come down. So they get too aggressive. This whole parcel tax renewal was about a no-tax-increase extension, so I don't see that opportunity in the same way of being aggressive here. The other one, though, that is a concern always, is the idea of being lazy. And what I mean by that is, you look at it and say, 75% on our poll, we've got it in the bag, let's vote, put it on the ballot, and everyone walks away, right? And when you do that, the tendency is for things to unravel, right? What happens on election day isn't what your poll says, it's the decisions you're going to make based on this poll and about how you structure this measure. It's the level of effort that town's going to put into outreach to your community to help them understand this decision, and ultimately, an independent campaign that will step up on behalf of this measure during the campaign cycle. And it's going to be dictated by events that occur, some of which you can control, some which you can't. And so, you know, I mention that because, you know, every tax measure, this one included, has a bit of an uphill climb, right, to be successful. And the natural tendency is for stuff to unravel, not the other way. So with that in mind, there's a couple things I want to leave you with. Number one, and I'll kind of take these out of order, need for public outreach and communications. Just outreach to your community and help them understand the decision that it is that you're having them, you know, ask them to make, what the city's, you know, what the role of parcel tax has been in the community in terms of funding services, and what's at stake here. You're not advocating on behalf of the measure, but town can't do that. You're just simply helping them understand what's at stake. And secondly, there would be a need for an independent campaign to carry the measure through the election cycle. Town can't do that. Council members on their own private time can. Other residents certainly can do that. But it's important that there's a group out there that can help continue that communication during the election cycle on behalf of the measure. And then finally, let me circle back to election timing. Typically, in a community, when you, it was anticipated to be a pretty low turnout election, which is November of this year, you tend to get a different demographic, tends to be much older, much more conservative, much more anti-tax. And we see in most communities that when you go for these low turnout election dates, the natural levels of support in a community are substantially lower, sometimes 10%, 12% lower. We didn't see that at all here. In fact, when you look at that November 2013 election or electorate, support was higher by a percentage for that group as well. So in terms of timing, I would suggest that you shoot for the November 2013 election. It makes for an aggressive schedule between now and the time you have to file. But I think that's a good date to put it on. And also, you never want a plan to fail, but also, my understanding is, gives the town an opportunity to come back in June. If something happens in November and it isn't successful, you have the opportunity to come back in June and try it again before the tax expires. So with that, in my presentation, I welcome questions from councilors.
Any councilmember have a question? I have.
Let me ask this. Do you think that six years or four years makes any difference?
I don't think.
Can only do four, so it doesn't make any difference.
Yeah.
I don't know where six came from, but four's maximum, you can do it by four.
I don't think he understood the law about, we can only do four.
Really? Because the parcel tax was based on.
Four.
I've never encountered that before, so is there a particular provision that's decided there for towns?
Yes. There's a statute that basically limits parcel taxes.
Parcel taxes for cities to four years?
Four years.
Interesting. Okay.
And, you know, they're specific views. It's always been four years.
Interesting. Okay. You actually are one of the few cities that have parcel taxes, right? A lot of other cities are using sales taxes or 218s or other measures, so parcel taxes aren't that common.
They're for schools.
Yeah, and schools doesn't have the same limitation in terms of duration.
Well, we have a lot of retail here.
We.
Right, right.
I showed a horse the other day.
Yeah, or you teens, right?
Frank, when we asked the president to fund his business here.
Okay. So, Karen?
Yeah. Tim, you've mentioned several times, as long as you don't increase the tax rate. And I know that how, question number six is written, says that typical parcel tax, parcel is about 750. We do have some that are small. So if we were to consider an increase, or just 750 per se, we would reduce our chances in November?
Yes. I can't quantify what that would be in this case, because we never asked, right, about that. If we had been thinking about an increase, would we have structured the survey differently to give it that differential? I can't, I won't say that you wouldn't be successful, but it certainly puts a lot of additional risk on the measure, because these are what we call no-tax-increase extensions, and we do them for school districts quite often and everything else. And in those cases, when we have tested it, we have found usually somewhere between eight and 10-point differential.
Today, I'm going to show you all five.
Between a no-tax-increase extension versus a measure that's going to have some modest tax increase.
What you said in the survey, your reference was to 750. So you said, the parcel tax that you have was, you know, on average, is 750 per parcel, and, you know, do you support it? So, I remember we talked about that.
Yes.
You know, we didn't go into the differential, we just talked about 750. So that's the number that was put in front of them during the discussion.
Correct.
I can guarantee you that people who are paying less than 750 know that they're paying less than 750, and it would be.
Just telling, reminding Tim what the question was.
I just wondered, what was your?
I didn't ask the question, you asked.
About the 750.
I asked and had an answer.
Yes, you did.
No, I'm glad about this. The reason I brought it up is the survey was based on six years, even so. In fact, we know we can't do it, and I just wanted to know if you thought.
I thought that was a good point. That was going to be my point, because we can't, just to let everybody know that we can't. Does any member of the public have any comments on this survey?
My gut questions, your recommendation on the off-year election being appropriate. What was the screening you did on the 514 voters? Were they four out of five? What was their voting record?
We have algorithms that we work with that would look at somebody and say, this is an individual who is either likely to participate in November 2014, right? So in this case, somebody who has, depending on when they registered in town and when they voted, we would want to see that this individual has participated in a similar off-year election, I mean, a gubernatorial election for November 2014. For the 2013, we want to see that they are somebody who's participated, either a perfect voter, or they have a record of participating in these low turnout elections in town. And there's about 3,700 November 2014 voters. We also, by the way, check that against the turnout from past elections and say, okay, are these algorithms, not only are they selecting high propensity voters, are they also producing turnout that is similar to what we have seen in those types of elections in Adderall in the past? And we do that for both November 2014 and November 2013.
What was your criteria for out of five election?
I'd have to go back and look exactly. It's usually never that simple. It's usually three or four.
Because you usually use high propensity voters, and I just make sure that that's what you did.
Yes, yes.
In your mind, you did.
Yes.
Because turnout could be very low, and there's nothing on the ballot that's big enough. And if you have a 20% majority, according to history, and you only have a 30% turnout, you know, you're really running a risk, I think. Now, I'm not saying it's going to be 30%, but either an off-year election without a governor, without a president, you've got nothing on there, and you can get people out of those chairs and go home, except for the campaign.
Then a council election at this point is, and we are on that four-year cycle. We don't really have, for whatever reason, we are on that off-year.
You've done it before?
In 2009, in 2005. Actually, we tried it in 2004, and it didn't pass, had to go to 2005 in June, but that then put us on the off cycle.
So you have done it in the past on the off cycle?
Yes, we did in 2009.
And you?
We were successful. We were very successful.
You had a little margin?
No, it was almost 80%. It was about 80%.
All right, well, that was my concern.
Yeah, so.
And if I just point out one other thing, then that is, in a community where we were seeing big differentials in support, national support for this measure based on the turnout, in other words, as you expand the turnout, you're getting one answer. As you shrink the turnout, you're getting a very different answer. Your point becomes that much more important than how accurately are we modeling the turnout and who it is that's going to be turning out in these elections between these two environments, because it makes a big difference in terms of what the national support is. I'm a lot less concerned about that in Adderall, in part, because as we expanded and contracted this universe from a sampling perspective, and there's an example, November 2014, but we also had June in there, we also had November 2013, as you shrunk it, the support levels are very consistent. And in fact, they actually were slightly higher in that low turnout election among those high propensity voters than they were in the somewhat broader electorate that's going to participate in November 2014. And so I'm a little less concerned about the November 2013 election being a low turnout and a problem in this case, because we just didn't see that differential at all.
I think we are a mail-in ballot town, and especially in these off-year elections, we don't really go cast our votes at the ballot box, so we have a lot, most of our residents are absentee ballot holders anyway, so I think that makes a big difference. Any other members of the public want to make a comment? Yes, sir.
There was a chart on the people who were against the parcel tax, and it gave the reasons. Can you put that up for a second? I didn't understand the chart.
It's a little, I might say that your chart was a little illegible at times.
Hard to see.
Yeah, hard to see.
Right. I think there was a fuzz factor.
You've got a fuzz factor going on, the typeface is a little small.
That one?
Yeah, so was this?
Taxes are too high.
Was this a 0.6?
It's a.
Percent of 2.7 people?
It's a point, there are, at this point, I believe, there's 19%. I had, let me go to the last slide.
He said 19%.
19% who were opposed, plus the 5% who were unsure, right? So you've got about 25% there, 24%. And these percentages are of those. So the number one issue was that, I'm not supporting this because I think taxes are already too high, it's essentially a quarter of a quarter, right? So you're looking at about 6% right, who was in the community who weren't going to support it for that reason. So each of these things, you would essentially multiply by 0.25 to get your total in the community, the total voters who have that opinion.
And so, and you did say that these reasons are pretty standard across the board in other jurisdictions, they're not specific to us.
Exactly. And that's the reason why we asked this, is we just want to understand, if someone's voting no, are they voting no because they don't believe in tax measures or bonds, or they think taxes are too high, or they feel that there's wasteful spending, things like that? These are all extremely typical responses. Or is there something neat going on in Adderall that we want to know about prior to placing that on the ballot? These are pretty much textbook for what you typically see when you ask this question on any other type of measure, be it a city measure, or be it a school measure, or a special district.
That 0.6 is one person.
Yep. We know who it is.
In Denver.
That's what I thought.
He was going to skew it one way or another. Any other public?
It was targeted to.
And, yeah, so my takeaway is that from the way the polling was, the survey was written, that it is a renewal of our existing tax for our city only, and all the money comes to the town, it doesn't go anyplace else, that we have really strong support. My takeaway is, if we mess around with it and try to put something on the ballot that's not that, then our likelihood of being successful, we might have to work harder to make it pass and educate the public, but they would not be expecting that.
I think if you go for a tax increase again, or you put a CPI on it, which a lot of, and I don't know what the rules are on that, in case if you only got four years, CPIs probably don't make a lot of sense anyways, they tend to be for longer durations. If you go for an increase, it's a different ballgame. It doesn't mean it's a ballgame that you can't be successful at, it's just it's a more difficult playing field to be on certain than the one that we tested here, which is continuing what we already have.
You don't think the residents would feel it's a bait and switch? I mean, you surveyed me on this one thing, and now you're doing something different? You know, you can't trust those councilor residents.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, you'll undoubtedly have some people stand up in that case that maybe wouldn't stand up for it. They're happy to continue paying what they're paying, but now, wait a minute, we're increasing it? Sometimes you're going to get a different reaction to that often. Again, we didn't test it, so I don't know how difficult that scenario is, and how much of a difference you have in your community for that.
Okay. So, any other comments? We'll let him go.
Yeah, I didn't actually put that response in.
You're trying to.
We have reduced our legal fees, so I will not say that.
Now that it comes down to only one person.
So we know who it is. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think that our subcommittee and our community who've worked with you found working with you very.
Yeah, that's good.
I learned a lot, didn't I?
Yeah.
And I thought that the way you developed the questions and the methodology and how you did your analysis, I thought was excellent. It was a great experience. It wasn't what I anticipated, because I've been involved in other types of surveys, and yours was very impressive. So thank you very much.
I appreciate it. It was a pleasure working with the subcommittee as well.
Perfect.
We'll take that credit.
Well, thank you. I don't, we don't take any action on this at this time. I just received your information and appreciate that.
We paid the invoice.
Oh.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we'll go on to item number 14, where there is action to be taken. And I'm going to just turn this over to our city manager to present his report on item number 14.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Item number 14 is the actual ordinance to put on the ballot for the measure, the renewal of the parcel tax measure and the authorization to extend our GAN limit to cover the proceeds. You have two options there, to pass the ordinance as adopted, advising staff of the appropriate tax rate table to include, which is included as part of the options in the pack, or decide not to pass it at this time. Within the ordinance itself, on page three of five, section nine, one of the council members caught that we have an error in the dates. Those all need to be updated, you know, it's fiscal year, let me see here, fiscal year.
It was just the old one.
Yes, it's the old one, exactly.
Only other dates were right, it's just that one.
Oh, we got it.
What section was it?
Section nine.
It was just up at the top, Phil. You've got the dates below right.
Page three of five.
Twenty-ten and eleven.
Yeah, and the election date's November fifth, 2013, so we'll just update that as part of the signature part of it, that needed to be amended within the ordinance. So it's fully carried for the council's consideration this evening.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Do any members of the public want to speak on this item, which is the decision to renew the parcel tax as it currently is in existence, or the way the report is, there's a couple of other options that have been presented. One is to do a flat tax at fixed rate, $750 a parcel, excluding the private club. Another is a flat tax for a half acre or more, and leave the smaller lots as a graduated. And that option actually would bring in less revenue. Flat tax would be a bit more of revenue, but the existing tax is on this example, which is a graduated rate. And members of the public, Mr. Lively, you're our expert. I think Mr. Lively has participated more in parcel tax renewals. In fact, in 2005, he's the reason I'm here, because he, can we turn that down so that it's not?
Turn it off.
Okay, good.
I have one comment. Don't rock the boat. Keep the thing the same, because you just saw a great presentation that said the parcel tax would go as planned and go right on through. So if you start fooling around with something else, it's going to be that much harder to sell. Secondly, the way the resolution is written, it talks about four years and expenditure. Eight years ago, we passed measure W, and it was all-inclusive and one measure was much easier to pass than S and T. S and T, we had a tough time, but understanding what S was and what T was, can that be combined into one, one proposition? What on?
There are two separate measures, and I understand what you're speaking about, lightly. One is the companion measure for the appropriations, one is the actual parcel tax. Leave it to the city attorney to articulate if it can be combined. I'm not sure they can.
Well, we did it in June, whether or not it was legal or not, you know, we did it in June of 2005. I have a feeling that the attorney that we subsequently had realized that that was not the right way to go, but we did have a hard time. This is our logo, S and T, safety and transportation, traffic.
Traffic, yeah, sorry.
Safety and traffic, but for S and T, and that was how we did it for measures. And it was a little challenging to combine.
It would make sense to combine them, quite frankly, but I'm going to have to look and see.
Okay.
If it's something that anybody raised ahead of time, so.
Okay.
But if you think about it, the ultimate irony would be as if they approved expanding the tax for four years, but didn't approve the GAN limit, so you can't spend it.
Well, right. Yeah, so, okay, yes, sir.
So, Rick, I think that in addition to keeping this tax the way it is because of the kind of support that's been indicated in the survey, I think that you run the risk of misleading the public if you try to change it, because we've just done a survey, and you've gotten a quarter of the people that are, that they deem to be likely to vote, or maybe a little higher than that, if you're saying 1750 people would vote, and you have 500 people in the survey. I really think that you run the risk of looking disingenuous to the public, and that's the wrong thing for this council at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public to speak? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to council for discussion about Mr. Navi. You want to go first?
Well, maybe, I'm going to say some things are different from everybody else. Eventually, I want to see a flat tax. You know, this tax pays for services. Whether you have a quarter acre, a half acre, or three acres, the services to each one of those is roughly the same. And therefore, I think that rather than taking a big bite by changing the tax for the smaller portions to what we really should be, I think that we can make a compromise and do it, you know, gradually, and the next parcel tax, we can bring it full up. But at the present time, my feeling is very simple, that there's an option B in here, which raises the parcel tax for a small amount to smaller parcels, keeps it at 750 for everybody else. And for each private club. And for each private club, there's an item here that says $10,000. Well, you know, if you take the circus club, which is probably the one that we're really talking about, it's 29.2 acres. If you base the acreage at $750 per acre, that goes up to about $22,000. My feeling is that this $10,000 was put in a long time ago. It's been huge appreciation since then, and my recommendation is that you raise that amount by a considerable amount. I would recommend $25,000. So these are my comments.
Thank you. George, do you want to go?
You know, I agree with some of the public comments that have been said related to changing the rate. Over the last week, maybe even since Fridays, and some of this has hit some other people's hands, the public, my phone has had a few phone calls related to, wait a minute, you didn't ask me in the poll that you're going to increase my property tax related to this supplement at all. And I, I feel that's kind of a bait and switch on us. You know, if you increase it, then I'm not going to be very happy. The reasoning why my parcel is taxed in that rate is because I'm in an entry-level parcel. I wasn't here, so, you know, my ears, you know, open to this, because I had been looking to the logic and hearing her logic related to it, is that I'm in an entry-level parcel, and a lot of the people that were at these entry-level parcels when this was done, back when it was originally studied, were on fixed incomes and there was some concern, and therefore they had a lower rate. And also listening to Tim, I have some concern. I, I'm interested in success, and I'm also interested, and I've said it all along, transparency and being straightforward with the residents of Atherton. If we're going to switch something up, if we're going to bait and switch them, say one thing and do another, there are going to be a percentage of people that aren't going to be very happy if we all of a sudden are going to be starting them, you know, with a new rate. I think that if I had to reconsider this in the future, I would have them survey and, you know, be very transparent and forward about, we are talking about a flat rate at 750. My concern is, is again, I, I'm interested in success. I'm interested in being straightforward to the residents of Atherton. I'm interested in the transparency that we're doing things above board, we're not bait and switching them. I mean, I wouldn't like it, although I do have the higher rate. So I, I, I think that leaving it status quo, based on what we've done today, is what I would say was.
All right. Phil, do you want to go?
Sure. First off, I'm an anti-tax person, I hate taxes. However, I believe that where the town is today with regards to, we're just coming out of the financials, financial issues that we've had in the past. Are we on the road to recovery? Yes. Are we making good inroads? Yes. Did we have good news in the almanac today with the property values going up 9% in Atherton? That says things are going well, and we have a balanced budget. But I, I believe that we need this tax. But there are a couple of provisions in this tax that I feel are, are important, that the council needs to take seriously, and I think we need to look at, and that's in, one is in section three, where it says that each year we'll look at the revenues, and we'll look at our situation, and we will determine if we need to actually assess the full tax. And I think that we owe that to the citizens of Atherton to, to take that look. And if we don't need the money and things continue to move along in the right, right manner, we have the allocation there, we need to fall onto it, we can, we can tax up to the level of which this, this parcel tax says we can, but we don't have to tax there. And I think that that also goes a long way to instilling confidence in the community to say, we're going to do that. Secondly, we are in, in a little bit of a surplus situation, and, and that's on our regular expenses versus our regular revenues. And, but many people know, who've been attending this meeting, and, and you've heard every council member speak here, we do have this situation of off-balance-sheet liabilities. And I think that really, in the years that we are fortunate enough to, to have a surplus, that we should make sure that, that we're putting away and paying off those off-balance-sheet liabilities. Because, you know, if you look at our budget today, you know, essentially, we do have a surplus, we just passed it a couple, couple months ago, and people will say, gee, you know, you gave the, the police department what they asked for, and, and we appreciate everything the chief is doing, and he's running a great, a great operation, and, and we want to make sure he has the, the financial means necessary. But some of the questions that people do occasionally ask, well, if you already got it funded, why do you need to pour another million dollars into it? So I think that, you know, we can't, we can't use a parcel tax to fund off-balance-sheet liabilities. So you can't go to that. But I had the conversation earlier today with the city manager, and, and, you know, he had some ideas that I'll let him have, have two minutes on, or more, as required, to discuss options with regards to these two, and then I'll get on to the last subject.
George? Thank you, Councilmember Wood, Madam Mayor. We did talk earlier, and one of the things the council could do is, you know, with the approval tonight, direct staff to return next month with a budget amendment for the current fiscal year to allocate some of our unfunded actuarial liability, actuarial, unallocated general fund reserve, sorry.
Hard to say.
Giving those all together. Unallocated general fund reserve directly toward a percentage of our off-balance-sheet liabilities, councilmember Wood was talking about. For example, 1.116 million of the parcel tax revenue goes directly to the police services budget. You could say, as a council, we want to allocate 50% of that.